Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry for the delay. We had a little party for Roger since this is his last day with us. And gave him a little going-away food and a little gift. So that's why we're running a little bit late. I would like to see, before I call the meeting to order, but I would like to say we're really pleased to have John Clem with us tonight up here. He's been with us, of course, for a while. And he probably knows more about Aiken right now than some of us have forgotten. But we're proud and pleased to have John with us. So at this time, I call a meeting of the City Council on May 11th, 2015, together. And welcome, everybody, here. We're pleased that you're here with us. And we will have guidelines. Let me go over our guidelines because we've changed a little bit because of several things. We would ask you, we have a clock, and we would ask you if you want to speak. You certainly may speak. There's no doubt about that. But we ask you to try to hold it to five minutes or less if you can. And I think tonight, we'll have a lot of speakers, and that way, we can get through a little bit faster, maybe. But if you do want to speak, you can come over to the podium and just give us your name and address. And, you know, just tell us what's on your mind, and that would be fine. Now, there are times when we will certainly be able to go over five minutes. We have presentations that take longer, and if council wants to ask questions of the speaker, then that's fine. So we don't want to make it hard. We just want to make it such that everybody gets an opportunity to speak and gets to say what they want to say. At this point in time, we will have invocation and a pledge of allegiance to our flag.
For those who choose to, may we bow our heads in prayer. Our most holy and heavenly Father, once again, you have allowed us to enter these chambers without harm or danger coming upon us. And for this, dear Father, we give you thanks, not only for protecting us, but for protecting our families, our country, our leaders on the local, state, and national level, and our community. God, you continue to bless us in spite of our sinful ways, and we ask for forgiveness of our sins. We realize that with the abundant blessings that you continue to bestow upon us, there comes a responsibility, and that is to be a blessing to others, many to whom we may not even know. We commit to share our blessings with others in our deeds, our love, and our service. God, we've undergone some challenges, some challenging times in our city over the last few years, but somehow, you reminded us that in everything, there is a season. You responded to us with our season of challenges by returning Roger the Duke to us as a season of blessings. And God, we thank you for his leadership and pray that you will continue to bless him in whatever he does. Now you are bringing us into a new season of blessings with the appointment of our new city manager, John Clem. This season allows us to do new planting, but also to endure the fruits and harvest during Roger's leadership. We believe we have planted some good seeds as we enter this new season of blessings. We know that there will be some challenging times for John, and we pray for his leadership, we pray for his guidance, and we pray for his protection, your protection on him. We realize the challenging times that we previously faced is a way for you to test our obedience and faith in you. We continue to rely on you to lead and guide us, and we remain humble to your spirit. We pray, dear Father, that you will enlarge our territory, the territory of this city. And help us, oh dear Father, help our city to prosper and thrive in the way you would have it to thrive. And God, in all our blessings, in all our blessings, we will always and be mindful to acknowledge you and giving you the glory, the honor, and praise in all that we do. Amen.
(inaudible) Counsel, are there any deletions or additions to our agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, move on. First item of business is the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the work session of April 21st, 2015, and the regular meeting of April 27th, 2015. Do we have a motion in the second for approval?
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, show hands, please. All in favor, passes unanimously. The first one is recommendation, recognition, excuse me, of Public Safety Department for receiving their reaccreditation from Caleb. Chief, are you ready?
Mayor, Council, Clem, thank you for allowing us to be here today. And I'm just here to introduce retired chief John Gregory, who is our regional program coordinator for Kalia.
Good evening, Council, Mayor.
Good evening.
New manager, congratulations. I'm John Gregory, Regional Program Manager for the Mid-Atlantic Region of Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. What I want to do tonight is formally present the reaccreditation certificate to the Aiken Department of Public Safety. The Aiken Department of Public Safety has distinguished itself among the 600, well, close to 1,000 in the nation, but local law enforcement agencies, approximately 600 agencies locally, who are nationally accredited under the Commission of Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. It was established in the 1970s, and it was built out of finding the best practices and the best way to go about managing public safety, communications, law enforcement. I am so pleased that Chief Beranco, Director Beranco, has led his agency so professionally in the last few years to maintain the standards that they established in 1998 when it first became part of Kalia. They've distinguished themselves with excellence. They have been recognized with Meritorious Award for continuous service. One thing about Kalia accreditation, it's not just a certificate. This is showing that you have standards. You maintain those standards, and everyone knows what you measure gets done. This agency has distinguished itself through troubled times and good times, and the way they do that is maintain those standards and operate under those standards. The staff that the chief has put together, they worked through his appointment, new accreditation managers, two line-of-duty deaths, and things continue to go on. They established credibility, not only in the city, but throughout the country and this region. Cities of large, larger cities like Charleston, Columbia, Lexington and PD, and my home department that I commanded for 10 years, Rock Hill, those agencies don't have anything on Aiken. They are among the elite of the elite. That doesn't mean that things don't go wrong, but when they do, they know how to handle those. There will not be continuous problems because there are time standards dedicated to them to keep them focused on doing the right thing at the right time, the right way, for the right reasons. With that said, what they have done, they were recently re-accredited in Reno, Nevada, Nevada, in March of this year. They were given Meritorious Award for, like I said before, for 15 years of continuous accreditation. They were assessed under the gold standard. The gold standard distinguishes it not by just having a process, but they were, we monitored the outcomes, not just the process, the actual outcomes from being accredited. As we go forward, I believe your agency, your city is best served. And again, I want to congratulate the staff and Chief Beranco for his professionalism and maintaining the highest standards in public safety. And again, I want to present that to the council, show you what is now hanging on the walls of the law enforcement, the Public Safety Building, I'm sorry. I had to get used to the public safety, I have to say sometimes. The Public Safety Building, this is their newest award, and this means they have maintained those standards. And as they transition to a new, the new generation of assessment of our institution, the Power DMS system, it's going to be based on outcomes, not a process. This is not a certificate to say we've done something good and we earned a certificate. This is actually based on outcomes and measurable achievement. Again, congratulations, chief. I'd like to have chief come up now and officially give to you.
Chief, I'd just like to say just a few words about the, I was at Aiken Public Safety when Chief Busby called us into a, and some of the people in the back of the room will remember this, Chief Busby called us into a department head meeting and said, "We're going to be accredited." They thought this was a horrible word that we became very familiar with. But now, the dedication of this force, the men and women that serve our community every day, they don't know the difference. This is what we expected of them every day. You can see by the showing tonight, and I'd like to recognize just a few of those people that really worked hard on that, the accreditation team. First and foremost, our accreditation manager, Captain Phil Keston, if you please stand, please. The rest of the accreditation team, Lieutenant Ben Harm. Christiansen. Lieutenant Brian Key. Betsy Hook. And, she couldn't be here tonight, she's away on vacation. But if it's all right with council, I'd like to have everybody come up and take a picture with John and council.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, council.
Come on up, guys.
Please, put down.
Put down.
Okay. Okay. Get ready.
Get ready, love, too.
(laughter)
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 (applause)
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 The next three items that we have are proclamations, and I want to make sure, see if people are here. Is Carol Singletary here by chance? Carol? Okay, she's not here. I'll read them anyway, but just wanted to see. Dennis Saylor's here, I know. So Dennis, why don't you meet me over there? And then there's another one that I know the person was not here, for Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness. But...
(pause)
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 Proclamation on Better Hearing and Speech Month. Whereas SOTOMA was founded in 1912 in Kansas City, Missouri, as a leader in the fight against hearing, speech, and language disorders that constitute our nation's number-one handicapping disability, affecting many people in Aiken alone and 38 million Americans nationally. Whereas most people with community problems can be helped medically, surgically, through personal hearing devices, technical innovations such as induction looping or speech and language rehabilitation, but first, they must know that such help is available. Whereas Better Hearing and Speech Month is an intensive annual effect sponsored by SOTOMA and other national hearing, speech, and language organizations, informing people about community disorders, encouraging those who suspect a problem to seek assistance, and publicizing the availability of service resources. Whereas this campaign should help to encourage and stimulate early detection, proper treatment, prevention, and greater understanding of hearing, speech, and language impairments. Now therefore, I, Frederick Cavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Aiken and City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Better Hearing and Speech Month in Aiken, South Carolina, and urge all citizens of Aiken to learn more about hearing, speech, and language handicaps, and to encourage a more enlightened public attitude about this, our nation's most widespread melody, presented May 11th, 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
I'm Dennis Saylor, and I want to thank Mayor for making this proclamation. And the essence of brevity, I'm going to pass my baton over to Don Bartle, Mayor, who is the president-elect for SOTOMA National, as well as serving on the Board of Hearing Charities of America. So, Don, could you say a few words, please?
Thank you. It's great that we have this proclamation and recognition by the city. I'd like to thank the city of Aiken on behalf of the 500-plus SOTOMA clubs and 13,000 SOTOMANS nationwide and internationally. Hearing health is our national mission. We have most recently done something locally. We have looped, induction looping in the city playhouse, and that people with hard-of-hearing can go there. If you have a T-coil in your hearing aid, you can hear the play. If you don't, we have earphones for you, so I think you'll enjoy that. Our mission is so important because it's not recognized by so many people about hearing health. I just want to give you a couple of quick numbers, and then I will be finished. We all know people that have a hearing issue and need help, or informed where to find help. Hearing is the number-one health issue in men over 65, and number-four with women. Hearing loss over a period of time breaks down communication and causes isolation. You do not want to participate in activities because you can't hear. Hearing loss is irreversible. It even affects high school students. Seventeen percent of the high school students in this country have some type of hearing loss at this time. Many have the beginnings, and so many of the, our citizens do not recognize the fact of NASCAR races, for instance, the noise in taking small children to these events, even some band recitals and so on. The hearing is so hot, and these children should be wearing safe ears that are available through SOTOMA. So I just wanted to call this to the attention of our citizens of this city and to thank the City Council and the city for this recognition of our national mission of hearing health. Thank you.
(applause)
I'm going to move back up.
I'm going to read these two proclamations since they were asked us to do this, and even though they're not here. So bear with me another few minutes, if you would. The next one is Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month. Whereas teen pregnancies have far-reaching consequences that adversely affect the health, education, and economic future of South Carolina's young people. And whereas in 2013, more than 4,700 young girls ages 15 to 19 gave birth in the state. And there are a lot of numbers here, so maybe you can stick with it. Whereas teen birth rates in South Carolina decreased by 54% between 1992 and 2013. And whereas teen birth rates in South Carolina decreased by 13% between 2012 and 2013, the lowest teen birth rate for girls 15 to 19 ever recorded in South Carolina. And whereas, however, the progress in teen birth rate reductions that saved South Carolina taxpayers an estimated $172 million in 2010 alone should not suggest decreases in investment and commitment to this issue. Whereas Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month is an opportunity for parents, teens, educators, program providers, faith-based organizations, locally elected leaders, and statewide policymakers to work together to reduce and prevent teen pregnancy in South Carolina. Now therefore, I, Frederick Cavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Aiken and City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month. Throughout the city and community, and encourage all Aiken citizens to work together to reduce and prevent adolescent pregnancy in our community and throughout the Palmetto State, presented May 11th, 2015. This is the last one. Whereas a significant portion of Aiken residents are persons with varying disabilities and may be apparent or hidden, and whereas individuals with disabilities have the same desire for equal access and right as those without disabilities. And whereas those desires for equal access and equal rights include but are not limited to education, employment, community programs, and resources. Whereas including all individuals with disabilities fully in the community enables the utilization of the invaluable knowledge, skills, talents, and diversity they have to offer. And whereas Americans with Disabilities Act Celebration Day recognizes that individuals with disabilities are capable, contributing members of the society. And whereas individuals with disabilities are worthy of full access and inclusion in Aiken and the surrounding communities. Now therefore, I, Frederick Cavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Aiken and City Council, do hereby proclaim May 30th, 2015, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Aiken, South Carolina, and encourage our citizens to work together to promote increased opportunities for people with disabilities and to recognize the many contributions made by people with disabilities to our community, presented this day. Actually, this is going to be presented on May 30th at the Week Center, and I think there's the folks that are going to walk around the Week Center for this, but it ought to be a big gathering out there. Okay, that's all the presentations. Under old business, the first item, is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council presently has 10 pending appointments to fill vacancies on different city boards, commissions, and committees. Two appointments are presented for council's consideration and vote at this meeting tonight. Mayor Cavanaugh has recommended the reappointment of Doris Begley to the Arts Commission representing the Performing Arts category. If reappointed, Ms. Begley's term would expire on April 11th, 2017. Councilwoman Diggs has recommended the appointment of Donald Moody to the Recreation Commission to replace Robert Aaron, who has resigned. If appointed, Mr. Moody's term would expire September 1st, 2017. For council consideration is the reappointment of Doris Begley to the Arts Commission and the appointment of Donald Moody to the Recreation Commission.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second for approval?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, show hands, please. All in favor, passes unanimously. Are there any nominations for our next meeting on any of these boards, commissions? Second reading of an ordinance to adopt a local hospitality tax is our next item.
Mr. Mayor, an ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the Code of the City of Aiken to adopt the local hospitality tax.
I know we have a lot of folks who want to
Okay, I know we have a lot of folks who want to speak and we'd like for you to do that. We usually just go from one side to the other, come back, so why don't we do that again? If you'd like to speak, just raise your hand and please come on up to the podium and give us your name and address. And, you know, two or three of you could come on up so that you're ready to speak when the other person is complete, finished.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Howard E. Hillman. I live at 410 Capella Drive, and I'm speaking against the tax. And I'm going to use personal experience. But I have the chart that was up there two weeks ago posted up, please.
We may not have that. Do we know which one that's?
Expenditures and expected costs in red and green.
Oh, that's your chart, right? I'm not sure that we were prepared for that. This one?
Looks like it.
Stuart, can you do the honors, please?
As you look at the chart, you will see inflation in the red, projected tax income in the blue. I will give my experience to refute that. I go to Subway once in a while for a sandwich. And last September, I went to Subway and got a sandwich, and it was Fod Dog. And the sales tax at that time was seven percent. So I paid thirty-five cents in taxes on the sandwich. The sandwich then went up to six dollars in a couple of months. And so I paid seven times six, forty-two cents for my sandwich. I didn't get any more food, I just paid more taxes, okay? Well, along comes the county and they put eight percent on. And now I pay eight times six, forty-eight cents for my sandwich that I don't get anything for. So what I'm saying about the chart is, and this is generally true, as inflation increases, taxes tend to go up with the inflation even though you don't increase them. You don't have to increase them to get more money. Inflation and taxes go up parallel. And so the chart should show that the blue line and the red line go about the same. So that's why I speak against this tax, and I speak against all taxes. Now, I know I'm barking up a hollow tree, but I'm barking. And I thank you very much.
My name is Mike Stake, and I live at 165 Equinox Loop here in Aiken. City Council has proposed a one percent hospitality tax for the purpose of making funds available to assist the Aiken Hotel with a two-point-five to three-million-dollar parking structure, among other projects. First, I do not believe in public-private partnerships. You, like the federal government, are picking winners and losers in business. Hotel Aiken becomes a winner in this scenario while City Billiards becomes a loser for not being part of the project. Hotel Aiken wins while Boots, Bridals, and Britches goes out of business. As recently as last year, the city has raised the trash rates and the water rates, and it is my expectation that next year, the water rates will increase as well as the millage increase from the city. While it is true that the city hasn't raised the millage rate since 1989, that is not to say the millage rate has not been increased. The school board raised our millage at five-point-six mils prior to the November vote for the one percent increase in sales tax. They have, and you may not be aware of this, but they have the ability every year to raise the mils, eight mils. The school board also received one-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars in the form of a bond and a one percent additional sales tax. You yourselves may have supported the vote to vote for both the bond and the sales tax. The state is planning an eight-hundred-million-dollar gas tax bill that will raise three existing taxes and create a new tax or fee. The city has come late to the buffet for the taxpayer. The school board has taken the lion's share. Business creates business. You have overstepped your function and expertise in creating income-producing ventures. Jane Page Thompson had a column in the Aiken Standard that was thorough in illustrating this point. Willa Runn has sat vacant for twelve years, not creating a bit of income for the City of Aiken, but losses by its very existence. The Center for African-American History sits vacant. The Aiken Railroad Museum is a financial drain. Crossland Park won't make money but continues to slide downward. According to the article, you have overpaid for the Brinkley Building by threefold. Athel Avenue again was overpaid by threefold. I would like to believe that each and every one of you have the city and the people of Aiken at heart. I really would like to believe that. You have avenues that have yet to be explored before implementing a one percent hospitality tax. It would be unfair for me to be critical of your proposal without offering a solution. I have a five-year plan that will bring you hope as a citizen. We don't have a money problem, we have a spending problem. The 2008-2009 downturn was never implemented into the city's budgets. Mr. DeWor and Mr. Ebner, you have made attempts in the past to make the proper adjustments. My proposal is this: Reduce the city's budget by five percent across the board annually for the next five years. Sell Crossland Park, the African-American History Museum, the property that it sits on. Privatize the railroad museum. Your holdings as a city are significant and be creative. Reduce or eliminate business fees. What is good for the Hotel Aiken should be good for the rest of the businesses in the City of Aiken, and I doubt that you're going to invest in all the businesses in the City of Aiken. Mr. Ebner, as my representative, you may recall last week I sent you an email encouraging you to vote no on the second reading. I reiterate to all and encourage you all to vote no on the second reading. When you have explored these options, I'm sure that you will find a better financial footing. Business creates business. Let us do what we do best. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eleanor Myers. I live at 852 Board Monroe, City of Aiken. My husband and I moved here twenty-six years ago, and we have experienced the development of the City of Aiken. There were growing pains for sure along the way, and it seems we continue to grow painfully as a residence. I didn't come here to throw arrows at what you've proposed, but the gentleman ahead spoke very eloquently how I feel as well. The performance of private and public endeavors have not served us well financially. They may have eased the burden at the moment, but they have not been financial successes and they continue to drain the city. My mother was a wise woman, and when I had failures over the same thing over and over again, she used to tell me this little saying, "If you always do what you always did, you'll always get the results you always got." I think it's time we learn from the past and take a different approach, and I applaud the recommendation by the gentleman before. Surely a tax isn't the only approach. And by the way, a threaten of increasing the property tax, that's a scare tactic, and you're all smarter than that. And certainly municipalities in other places have improved their communities without taxing their citizens over and over and over. Thank you.
My name is Jack Beckerman, 188 Governor Lane. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for letting us speak because it's a great privilege for citizens to be able to disagree or agree, and that's what makes this country such exceptional, that we can do that and not be criticized for it. I oppose the tax basically because the name of a hospitality tax seemed like to me you were being hospitable to somebody. And that's not a good way to show hospitality to. Well, it seemed like to me what we were trying to do is get more tourists to come into Aiken, and then we tax them because they're not going to be here a while, so while they're here, we get them. And that just doesn't seem a very nice way to tax. And that brings me into the way we tax in general, state, locally, even federally. We seem to tax the people who can't disagree or can't vote against it. We tax the people who don't have quite enough representation to cause a lot of trouble. And that doesn't seem fair to me. Like the school tax, if you're going to want good schools, tax everybody. If you want good cities, tax everybody. Don't pick out groups that can't fight, that can't politic, that have no power. And that seemed like to me that's what we do, over and over again. And I agree with Mike. If you looked at that graph that we had up there a minute ago, every person in this city has the same problem that the county has, that the city has. Our income was going up, and everything was good, and all of a sudden, in my business, no more building permits, no more income, same expenses. The city is not the only one that has that problem. Every citizen in this city has that problem. Look at your savings rate. What kind of savings return do you get on your money if you got any in the bank? That same thing, the city is having that problem too. But you can't just look at your, but look at everybody. Let's take everybody. We don't need any more taxes. What we need to do is, if the income is going up and all of a sudden it goes down, in my family, we have to start looking at ways to cut. I can't keep spending the same money I was spending in my business when I don't have any income. And on this paper you gave us, you always sort of bragging about you didn't cut anything. That's kind of a little bit arrogant. I mean, most families, when they run out of money or they don't have the same income, they start cutting somewhere. That doesn't mean you have to cut everybody completely a hundred percent, but you could cut ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent. I think everybody in here wants to have a nice prosperous city. I don't think it's anybody here comes in here that wants to live in Aiken and wants to see things go down. But you've got to have some common sense. When you don't have the money, you can't spend it. Thank you very much.
James Whitick, 18 Brookline Drive, Aiken. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak to you again. I spoke out against this tax two weeks ago. And I've done some more research on it, done some research on the background of Aiken and their finances. And I objected to this tax for several reasons. First, the city used to have a hospitality tax some years ago, but you dropped that tax with a promise to the voters, if they would pass the capital projects' sales tax, you'd eliminate the hospitality tax. To me, passing this tax now is reneging on that promise. That's not fair in my book. I don't know, is it honesty? What are we doing here? Secondly, as stated in many articles in the Aiken Standard and letters to the editor, one noteworthy one is Gary Bunker's column last week, is that winners and losers are created unfairly, giving a few special tax breaks. Like a hotel suddenly gets a parking garage. No other hotel in the town is getting a parking garage. If the parking garage is so desperately needed, put it on the list of capital budget projects for the next round of the capital budget sales tax and let the voters agree or disagree with you. I think that's a reasonable request. Third, why is the solution more taxes? I've read your audit reports, and in the management discussion analysis of the financial information in the June 30, 2013 audit report, it stated, "The budget is balanced using a conservative fiscal approach." I applaud you for that. We continue to focus on spending within our means and at the same time preparing for our future needs. But in the audit report for a year later, June 30, 2014, it changed to, "We continue to determine what revenues need increasing versus what expenditures could decrease to balance the budget." Why the sudden change? Why are we now only revenue-oriented and no orientation towards reducing expenditures? That doesn't seem right. Isn't it your responsibility as our representatives to look at both revenue increases and expense decreases at the same time? The only expense reduction I've read about in the local paper has to do with a private company. Dempster-Dumster came to you and made a proposal about handling your recycling and saving you trips to North Augusta or Augusta and nothing on your own part. So I don't think you're making an honest effort on behalf of us as our representatives to really fine-tune the budget and bring expenses into line with existing revenue. Your comments in your audit report says, "We're just going to look for new revenue sources," rather than saying, "Let's look at how we're spending our money and get the most for our money." Speaking of ideas for expense reductions, what kind of incentive program do you have for the staff to come up with ideas? Do they get a percentage of the savings that they might recommend? This is common in some other municipalities across the U.S. and very common in the business world. Might be a business practice that the city ought to adopt. And business growth doesn't magically happen just because you have a hospitality tax and you might do some infrastructures changes, fix a few roads, et cetera. Does that mean businesses are going to come into town? Right now, businesses have a big problem. It's called lack of capital. It's very hard for a new small business to get a bank loan. The Dodd-Frank's legislation regulating banks has been a disaster on small community banks. They are scared to death to make a loan. They are scared to death to make a loan because they've got these regulators looking over their backs. And frankly, you need credit to loosen up so that people will go out and borrow, and banks will lend. Without lending, there isn't going to be new businesses coming into Aiken. Yes, you might get a few people fill up some of these little vacant storefronts, but nothing that's going to bring in two, three hundred employees. That's just not going to happen. I don't think Congress realized what a mess they created with that regulation. And while I don't like increases in taxes, I've read and heard discussions about the water rates and the garbage collection fees still not being adequate to cover the cost of these enterprise services. I'm not opposed to an increase in those taxes because you're providing me with an essential service, and I think everybody else is getting an essential service. I'd rather see those services pay for themselves rather than be paid by the other funds of the city and some fancy footwork on where to allocate the hospitality tax revenue to. And maybe we don't have to waste money on a parking garage not approved by the voters. I think that expenditure needs voter approval. And you have a new city manager, just on board now for about a month. He's got experience in other municipalities. Why not give him the opportunity to look over your budget a little closer and see where there might be some savings? And the other question is, why not just put this whole proposition on hold for six to nine months? Let him look over the budget? Let's take a look at maybe adding this as an advisory referendum in the November election. Let the people say, "Yes, we're okay with it," or "No, we're not." We know that if they say yes, it's not binding, that it would pass it. If they say no, it's not binding on you, but at least you hear the public out at the ballot You've all done a fairly decent job over the years, and so good that nobody chose to run against you. You all ran on, most of you ran on opposed recently. The only thing that comes to mind as a problem was the ice storm cleanup. And there was a problem with that, and you dealt with the cause of the problem. But I'm not so sure if you're reading the public right, and how much opposition there is to this tax, and what that might cause to happen with the next elections. And I just would ask you to consider postponing a decision on this until more, since you've done a little more homework on expense reductions, rather than focus on revenue increases and using an accommodations tax to build a parking garage that seems to benefit only one business in town. Thank you.
Ann Dix, 314 Jehoshua Drive, Aiken, South Carolina. Mr. Mayor, city manager, members of the council. I stood before you at the last meeting expressing my concern in opposition to the 1% hospitality tax. My view has not changed, but since it appears that it will pass, I have several questions I would like to ask. First, in the last meeting, Mr. Le Duke stated that approximately 1.2 million annually is estimated to be raised in revenue. What happens if it is significantly less than that? Will the council then come back seeking a millage increase? And this millage increase, and I want somebody to educate me on that, and my husband and I had a discussion on this. You say you don't raise the millage rate, but when the county raises the value of your house, you get the profit from whatever that is, even though you haven't changed, as the man said there, you haven't changed your millage rate. But if my house goes from 120 to 150,000 dollars, you benefit from that. It was also stated that the revenue would be used to entice new businesses to the area. What percentage will be allocated to the north side business development? There's a great need for incentives to give businesses to invest in the north side. I heard one councilman say that the money is on the south side. I would like for us to be aware that many great empires have fallen because a sect of its constituents felt as if they were disenfranchised. And third, will the projects proceed only as the money is available to complete them? I and many others are counting on you to use our revenue wisely to benefit all of the constituents of the city of Aiken. Be good stewards of our tax dollars. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Biddle. I live at 1124 Carriage Drive. And firstly, I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor, our city manager, and the other members of council for being here and hearing everyone speak, hearing everyone's concerns, and working diligently, along with our public safety officers who were recognized earlier to keep Aiken safe and successful. I, like many other people in this room, have several concerns about this hospitality tax, some of which have already been addressed. Firstly, we're just coming off of the school tax, the 1%, that was actually quite popular when we voted, and people said yes. Also, we're looking at the state gas tax. And now we're coming back and saying, "We need another 1%." And it seems to me that in the pitch that we were given, you know, we're talking about how this is going to better city development. What does this do for the people in the county? How is this affecting them? They're still paying the tax. We have, you know, the snowbirds who are here for three or four months, and we're counting on that to be a major, major source of this, because, let's face it, they're going out, they're spending money, they're out and about naked. But how does this affect us for the rest of the year? Also, if we're looking at having to do this, if we're looking at having to pay this tax, I have a serious problem, and I won't say who, but I have a serious problem with being told that the solution is to buy a cheaper steak, rather than to, you know, let's find some creative accounting and find some other wasteful things that we can take out of the equation so that we don't have to absolve this. This is not our burden. We, as citizens, pay taxes, you know, regularly. We voted yes for the school tax, and I would say that it's really only fair that if the burden falls on us, we should be able to, I agree, see it in an advisory referendum, and we should be able to decide if this is something, after being presented with actual materials with projections, not just looking at, you know, if median income is down, which is what we were told, how is this helpful? How is this helpful to citizens? If we have a median income that is low right now, how is this helpful for them to have to go pay a 1% hospitality tax on prepared food? This also affects lower-income families. When they're going to the grocery store, many people are getting, guess what, that falls under prepared food. And I think that it's just, there's no way to justify charging a hospitality tax for the residents of this city who are here for the whole entire year, not just four months, and expecting it to fund projects that may or may not pan out. How many times do we see big government throw money and incentives at things, and never happens? For these companies, they close their doors. Nothing ever advances. So how do we know that we're not going to be looking at that after we've paid the taxes? And then where does the money go? So I would ask, if this is something that we truly, truly need to develop the city, I would ask that you take into consideration the concerns of the people and put it into the ballot for an advisory referendum, and at least hear the people and hear what we have to say. If this is popular, if people agree, if people feel it's helpful, then there you go. But if not, it falls onto you guys to take into consideration what the people of this city feel and how it affects everyone. So again, thank you for letting me speak, but I would ask that you also let us speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Clark. I live at 123 Arc Taurus Drive. Can I activate the document camera, please?
What do you need?
The document camera, please.
Stuart, he wants to use the overhead.
This one first. I've been reading a lot of supposition and conjecture in the papers, and hearing a lot of rumor, and my background is mathematics. I'm a numbers guy, so I wanted to see what the situation would look like. And currently, as we see, our sales tax rate is 8%. There's only one county with municipalities in the state of South Carolina that has something greater, Charleston, with eight and a half percent. Now, if this passes taxes, if this tax passes, I'm sorry, that situation could change, and suddenly Aiken would be the leader in sales taxes in the entire state at 9%.
That's a little misrepresented. That's a little misrepresented, but go ahead.
Okay, I'm open to...
I'll respond, but I'll let you go ahead and finish your thought. I don't want to interrupt you.
All right. Now, the other thing I wanted to look at is that I also heard through an article in the paper that this fund was, this tax was supposed to fund some new positions in the city. And thank you, councilman, you are, for providing this copy for me. Now, I don't see anything in here in section one which would allow funding for anything other than buildings and advertising and other infrastructure. I don't see anything in there for funding positions.
Excuse me, you said you heard from one of our council members that this is to fund new positions in the city?
I read it in one of the articles in the paper. There was a graph, and it said, "Such percentage was allotted for funding two new positions in the city."
With the hospitality tax?
So I just had a question about that as well. So with that, I'll keep this brief, and gladly listen to any response. Thank you.
I'm a little confused with the numbers that you said you got, because I sent you a lot of data. What is it that I sent that you were referring to?
About funding the additional positions in the city that I read about.
Okay, I don't...
Section...
The economic development budget talked about...
The additional position in the city for the hospitality tax is the economic development person, the ombudsman, yes. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jane Paige Thompson, 240 Knox Avenue. Councilwoman Price, I believe it was Mr. Le Duke at the last meeting that mentioned the staff members that this would fund...
I'd just only ask him to repeat for clarity. Thank you.
And I have a problem with the city hiring somebody to basically go into the job of real estate agents, but I'm not here as a real estate agent, I'm here as a citizen. And I spoke to you two weeks ago about my concerns because of the burden of the potential gas tax in the state, about the 1 cent increase already imposed by the public schools, about my concerns about people on fixed incomes in the senior level, and then the young people that we're trying to attract into the city of Aiken who are starting out. These are young people. It's great to see a couple of them speaking. It's really great. We've got some young people moving here, and we want to encourage that. We don't want to discourage that. And one thing we found out about why the Chamber of Commerce did that report was that we were losing so many young people to North Augusta, and we're losing them across the river to Evans and to Columbia County. Well, I started talking to some of these young folks because I wanted to know why. And a lot of them said, "Well, because there are no places to have fun in the city of Aiken. It's mostly for retirees, and we want to go places where we can have fun, where we can go out, and we can have a great night out, and we can enjoy ourselves when we've got a babysitter." Well, now we're taxing their fun. Well, that's not going to encourage younger people to move here if we start taxing fun. I mean, if we want the under 35-year-olds to come here, taxing their night out isn't the way to do it. So I started thinking, what other opportunities do you have? And I know you all are allergic to looking at your mill rate, but in a reassessment year, now is the time to look at it. It will cause the least impact to property owners. And you went down to 62 mills. You could have been at 66 in '11 and stayed there. You would have had a little bit of money to do some of these things, I think. So that is something to look at. I mean, we are in a reassessment year with the county. You get your basis from them. We have an equalized basis in a reassessment year, so it'll equalize itself out. The negative economic impact on a two-mill going back up to your 66 through 62, even the four-mill, is probably not going to be that significant because property tax values have declined since our last reassessment. So now is the time to do that mill rate if you're going to do one, and not to do it over four mills. But beyond that solution, I thought about another one, and that would be for you all to reach out to York County, reach out to Anderson County, reach out to Orangeburg County, reach out to Berkeley County, and reach out to Colliton County. Because those six counties, including Aiken, could create a piece of legislation that would pass the House and Senate probably pretty easily with the fierce lobbying power of the municipal association, in order for you all to reduce the accommodations tax cap from 900,000 gross to 500,000 gross. That would put you in the league with the other counties like Charleston, Spartanburg, Lawrence, Georgetown, Richland, Beaufort, Orye, that have the same property taxes and entertainment taxes that you're proposing tonight. So if we want to be in their league, let's be in their league, and let's be in their league fairly evenly and on the same footing. So create the legislation, reduce that hospitality cap on accommodations, so you then can add, if this is truly to tax that 60% of people that don't live in the city, and this is really a tax to tax people who just eat out at nice restaurants while they're in the city of Aiken, it's not intended to hurt prepared foods for fixed-income people, it's not intended to impact people who the closest food they can find is a convenience store, which we do have in our city and our county. If it's really to get those people who do have that disposable income, get it through the accommodations tax. Join together with those six counties, five other counties, and go after a piece of legislation that makes sense. It's the thunderstorm that's working around. So...
Thank you.
The other thing I want to encourage you to do is work with the Chamber of Commerce. I know that the Chamber of Commerce is behind the study that you all have looked at that has encouraged four Republicans on this council to vote in favor of a new tax, which is just shocking to me. But work with the Chamber of Commerce and their new angel investor group. Those guys might come up with the money to build the parking garage for Hotel Aiken. Put this vote for a new tax on an advisory referendum in November, and let the citizens speak out, because tonight is celebrity waiter night to benefit Children's Place, and most of the restaurant owners that would have been here tonight are at their own restaurants' waiting tables for one of our most critical charities in this town. Forgive me, but the restaurant I'm working at tonight gave me an hour off of my waiting duties, and I'm going to leave, but I hope you all will do the right thing and change that 6-1 in favor of this tax to a 6-1 against it. Thank you.
My name is Lane Bradford. I actually live in the county, but I have ownership and properties in downtown Aiken and on the University Parkway. Two weeks ago, I was watching on my computer at home y'all's meeting. I was eating dinner, and when you guys voted 6 to 1, I said, "You've got to be kidding me." me. You've got to be kidding me. Another tax. Tonight, I got off work, I was eating dinner, watching it on the computer again, and was getting more and more angry, and I finally says, I'm going to drive on down. So I drove on down tonight. I just, you know, we get taxed every single way we turn. You know, when I buy, if this tax goes into effect, when I buy lunch for my employees, I'm going to pay an extra one percent. As a business owner, one percent may not sound like a lot, but when you're working with Medicaid and Medicare and other things as a healthcare business, one percent is quite a dent. I would really, really implore you all not to vote for this, but on advisory referendum, like everybody is really kind of brought up, you can see the support for this tax is not here. And I just, I urge you all to do the right thing. As I said, I was eating dinner and I said, I'm going to come down and just say a few words. So I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Sam Leverett, 319 Saddle Brook Trail in Graniteville. Mr. Mayor, Manager, nice to have you and thank you for allowing us to speak out. I'm a thirty-year-old, family, three small children at my house and a wife. I'm fortunate enough through my business that I can go out in the city of Aiken and spend money and not have to count the penis later to see if I have enough to pay my utility bills. However, I'm great friends and I have some great family members in mind that are not as fortunate as I am. And I literally see them, literally count the costs to see if they can go out and just have a good night out on town with their family members as a bond over dinner. And literally, you're talking about a different five dollars can make the difference for them. And I'm just thinking about people like that and whenever they normally would go out, just maybe every Saturday night to try to have some family time, this extra tax that they're spending could potentially prevent them from going out and do some of the things that we just want to enjoy, just work hard and go out on the weekend and just enjoy a nice meal. I just think that for me in my house, I realize that if I had a spending problem at Saddle Brook Trail, me getting more money isn't going to help me out at all. It's just going to go from buying one shirt to now maybe buying two shirts. I would say to you guys, just look at other ways you could probably cut the money out of your budget that you already have and just try not to just bring in more money from people who already given their fair share and doing everything they can to try to make this a nice place for us all. So just consider that if it's a spending problem, we don't need extra money. We just need to find ways to cut the budget that we already have and try to keep the little man in mind whenever you guys vote on whether or not to charge one percent on processed food. Thank you.
Not quite sure where the microphone is, but my name is Betty Wytham and I live at 306 Grace Avenue and I've lived in Aiken for fifty-six years. And I'm really appalled about this tax. I think it's truly an unfair tax at this time. I feel very sorry for the people on fixed incomes. I think it's an unnecessary tax. I don't think that the city is in a position to get into a business situation at this time either. And I just want to go on record that I do oppose the tax very strongly, and I hope that you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Hello, Kent Cabbage, 136 Laurel Ridge Circle. Like Mr. Bestley a few weeks ago, I have to say that I'm on the Planning Commission, but I'm here speaking as an individual citizen, so my views don't necessarily reflect those of the Planning Commission. We've heard a lot of good practical reasons to not have this tax. I want to give you a little bit of a different spin. I want to give you more of a conceptual and philosophical reason. As a taxpayer, as a citizen of Aiken, for the last fifteen years, I've seen a certain mindset take hold where slowly but surely I think we're kind of overstepping our bounds of the proper role of government. We've seen the city as venture capitalists, the city as real estate agent, the city picking winners and losers, as we've said before. And I've seen this grow and morph, and I think it's the perfect time with a new city manager, and by the way, welcome home, new city manager, I think it's the perfect time to finally disengage from that mentality. I know that there's been a lot of good intentions by some of the things that City Council has gotten involved in the last few years, but there's no getting around the fact, and this isn't rhetoric, it's not opinion, that many of these things have been boondoggles. In fact, there's been one after another after another. I want to look forward and not backward, but I really wanted to see, especially with the new city manager, this old mindset finally be gone, and yet it's enduring with this tax. This tax doesn't take us forward, it takes us back to a failed mentality. And it's very frustrating as a taxpayer and a citizen of Aiken. So as I see this tax coming about again, I think just conceptually and philosophically, we have a perfect time with a new city manager, possibly even some new faces on City Council this year, to break away from a failed mentality. One thing that's troubled me for years, think of all the vanity projects that the city has gotten involved in over the last few years that have been failures. Have you tried getting a water leak fixed? I don't blame Public Works, I think they're underfunded. They're just doing the best with what they can do, but when we have eighty homes in Crosland Park and that has failed and we've made all of these property acquisitions that have failed and it takes a month to get a water leak fixed, we have completely taken our eye off the ball as a government. So I think this is the perfect time to sort of step back, disengage from a failed mindset and look forward. I want to look forward. I want the city to move forward. But this tax doesn't bring us up to 2015 with the other municipalities in South Carolina. It takes us back to 2005 and the failures are there. So like I said, I think it would be fabulous if we could put this to rest, move on. We all want to move on. We all want to be positive. Break away from a failed mentality and not have one last legacy boondoggle. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gail Deloree. I live at 123 Bennington Lane in Aiken. I asked you to excuse the glasses, I had some eye surgery, so it's necessary. I am also Secretary of the Aiken County Republican Party. I would like to let you know that this past Thursday, the AKA GOP Executive Committee unanimously passed the following resolution: calling for the Aiken City Council to make the hospitality tax a ballot referendum; whereas Aiken City Council is attempting to increase a tax that the public has spoken out against; and whereas Aiken City increased the sales tax by one percent in March of this year; whereas the state legislature is debating an increase in the gas tax; and whereas a ballot referendum on the hospitality tax is not legally binding, however, can be used as an advisory ballot; and whereas the majority of City Council and the mayor of Aiken were elected as Republicans to uphold conservative principles; and whereas Aiken County Republican Party charges these council members and mayor who were elected as Republicans to adhere to the party platform. Therefore, be it resolved, the Aiken County Republican Party calls on the Aiken City Council and the mayor to vote against the hospitality tax at the second reading, and the Aiken County Republican Party wishes to have the hospitality tax voted on by the public as a ballot referendum in the next general election on November the third, 2015. And the Aiken County Republican Party calls on the Republican council members and mayor to adhere to the outcome of the advisory ballot. Thank you.
I have to say something to that. The city of Aiken is a city for all people. Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, whatever you want to call yourself, we're governed by, for all the people. And I don't think anybody that I know would want to separate themselves and vote based on a political party. I had to say that.
And Councilwoman Price...
Just a minute, Gail, just a minute. The city also voted, Councilwoman Price, to retain its partisanship on the council. We put that to the voters and we agreed that we would remain partisan office. One of the few in the states, but we let the people decide that. And while I respect what you're saying, I think you should respect the right of the Republican Party...
I do.
...to pass its views.
But I...
And I would love to hear what the Democratic Party would want to say about this tax.
We don't have anything to say because we, it's, that concerns me because we don't operate like this in this town. That's just not the way we do things. Thank you, though, for listening.
I respect your opinion, Councilwoman Price, and I certainly understand your position. If the Democratic Party had sent someone up here to speak against this tax, I know that the Republicans on the council would have gladly listened to what they had to say and know that they were elected as Republicans or Democrats. You did run on a ticket. You ran as a Democrat.
But I received Republican support.
I'm sure you did.
Because, because Republicans, the Republicans that I know, look at individuals and the issues rather than confined... I've said enough. Thank you, though, for your comment.
You're quite welcome. And I really would encourage the Democrats to speak out on the issue as well.
Thank you.
I know you don't want to. Come on in.
Hi, y'all know me. I'm Jane and I live, Jane Botters, and I live at 707 Hayne Avenue. I really am here tonight just to ask questions about this tax before you reinstated. We did eliminate it as a city several years ago, I think about twelve years ago. And I just think if you would pause before you reinstated, we might find that there's a real public consensus about what positive could happen with this. And I think one of the reasons there is not, in my opinion, is that, for example, with the parking garage, we don't know whether the city's going to have to buy land for that garage. We don't even know if there's enough. I certainly know that there are plenty of people in Aiken that think we need a parking garage downtown. I heard that years in and years out. And that said, and I think Hotel Aiken needs to be renovated. And in ten years, I don't know what's going to happen to that big structure. There's something doesn't, we want improvements in that major piece of property downtown. But I also see towns where there are parking garages that I know have been funded by other sources or I believe have been funded by other sources rather than local taxpayer money. And I think we ought to look into that, and I don't think that's happened yet. I don't know that there's been time to do that. I was hoping Mr. Clem might look at Stanton, Virginia, or Chattanooga, Tennessee is certainly a bigger town, but there are parking garages every other block. And I don't think these were all privately built. And I look at Augusta and there are a lot of downtown urban parking garages. And there is money for urban projects. Now, whether we're a big enough urban project to qualify for this, I don't know because I haven't done the research either. But I think that some of this work that we think is necessary could be a popular issue if we had an idea of where the project started and stopped and even if there's room for it in the first place. Because I don't know that for sure either. I don't know how much of a radius it takes or anything like that. So I mean, I just think that voters that are, citizens, I think, are very willing to pay taxes if they can see what it's for. And the city has tried to do that, and I think maybe you ought to try again on this issue and get some more solid figures to see if maybe there is another way that we can get this kind of growth that we want down all through our town. Another thing that bothered me that I just have to talk about is the business, when I read in the paper about the business license excise tax, and it's supposed to be relief, there is relief in that, but it's for new businesses. Now, we are asking local restaurants and grocery stores and whatever to collect this tax and provide it to the city to use for projects that are deemed worthwhile. They've got to do all of that, and the money is going to be, as I understood it, is going to be a tax, a three-year tax relief for new businesses? Well, you see, they're collecting the money and spending the money to collect the money because this doesn't happen for free. It's not a major activity of a business, but collecting taxes and sending them on takes some work by somebody employed there. And it just seems to me that maybe we should be giving the tax relief to the businesses that have to collect this money and send it to us.
There's actually two tax relief components. One is new business startup and it's a, it's a business license tax rebate that steps down each year for the first three years. First year, it'd be a hundred percent of their business license tax, which for most of those businesses is about fifty bucks, but for each of the first three years. And then for restaurants, it'd be fifty percent of their, of what they pay in business license tax because of the burden of collecting and remitting that money and all that stuff. So there's two components of tax relief.
Well, I think what definitely needs to be a component of tax relief to the businesses that collect this money for us. I really do. I think that should be the preponderance of it. And when you say that we're going to lure, encourage growth by eliminating the business license excise tax, well, you know how I feel about it. I mean, I harped on that for years. You don't encourage people to come into the city with a business license excise tax. You just don't. Now, they'll come in for other things like services and infrastructure. I got to push on, though. The other thing is...
I interrupted you for a few minutes.
That's okay. Part of this was infrastructure repair, and we have paid property taxes, business license taxes, raising the sewer rates, local option sales tax, all for infrastructure repair. And I looked at this definition of what the hospitality tax is supposed to be used for, and I think it's about the same thing that the accommodations tax is supposed to be used for. It's not...
Very similar.
And I don't recall that being used for infrastructure repair. I don't even recall that being an option. We used it to fund projects for, I mean, the city's used it to fund projects for tourism and all that sort of thing. But, and then I've got to stop, but I also want to say that when I go to a local restaurant, I mostly see local people and their guests. So I don't, I mean, I think if we're going to pass it, I don't think it's, if it's to be paid by local people, let's say so. But I don't think it's going to be paid by out-of-towners predominantly. But anyway, I just think if we had the answers to some of those questions about what projects were really going to cost, we might find there is some popular support and that this voting right now maybe will not generate. Thank you.
My name is Tony Caprow. I live at 659 West Pleasant Colony Drive here in Aiken. After hearing everyone speak eloquently regarding this tax, I obviously see a lot of opposition. I would think that the best thing the council can do is to table this for a little while, let our new city manager get, immerse himself a little bit more in what's going on in Aiken, and come up with another plan, and I think solicit input from the public and maybe put it on the ballot. But I think right now, the best thing you can do right now is to table it. That would be prudent, and I think that would be the wisest thing we can do on City Council. And I think we've had some great speakers tonight, lots of good input, but right now, I just think the best thing that we can do is just table it and let our new city manager get more involved in it, more immersed in it, and they come up with a better proposal than Speaker Mr. Murray, who's presented this, and solicit input from the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, all you guys. My name is Ron Felder, 956 196 Indian Trail. I won't sit standing up too long and talk to you guys, but I will say this, as a taxpayer and a business owner in Aiken County, taxing is something that's just constantly eating up business owners, eating up property owners, and you can't continue to just keep raising taxes on people. I've got six cars, four old classic cars and two cars from my wife and my son, but when I get those tax bills from the treasurer, and I'm thinking, good gracious, I get tax notes every day from the county treasurer there. So again, when I go to Richmond County and like Columbia, I don't get that too often due to the fact of the food taxes are very expensive. So I try and make my way back over to this side of the county, Aiken, and where taxes is not as much. So again, I would be a total against any new taxes. We just had to do the one percent tax on for schools, now we're looking at hospitality tax in Aiken, you're just taxing the county people, citizens, just too much. Now, looking at hospitality taxes in Aiken, you're just taxing the county people, citizens, just too much. Thanks.
Mayor Kavanaugh and to members of city council and to new city manager, I'm Richard Johnson, Jr. I reside at 428 Marion Street Northeast, Aiken. A resident of Aiken for 59 years, and paying city taxes for that long. The city of Aiken provides excellent services for its citizens. And this 1% hospitality tax, as I understand it, it's really a volunteer tax. Because if you do not desire to purchase a meal, you don't have to pay it. If you raise the taxes, local taxes, that's mandatory, and you don't have a choice. My personal opinion is I would be in favor of the 1% hospitality taxes. Thank you very much.
I'm going to keep it brief. I'm Dee Dee Vauders, 1022 South Boundary Avenue. I'm looking at this, Philip, I think you supplied at the GOP meeting the other night?
I did.
In 1989, the median household income was about 55.
Adjusted for inflation, yeah.
In 2013, it's 45. Why would you raise tax on people? When they have 10,000 less than they did before. These are your citizens. These are the people you represent. They're hurting. And frankly, if they want to go out to eat, you know, that was, that actually kind of scared me a little bit. When you say, well, people don't have to go out to eat, people don't go, people don't go out to eat. Businesses fold and people lose their jobs. We need people dining out. We need them supporting our local businesses. And they have a lot less money to do it with in 2013 than they had in 1989. Don't raise tax on these people. These people are already hurting. They've cut their budgets. Please cut yours.
Anyone else would like to speak? Okay. It's back to council for consideration.
We, I move that we waive the rules so we can discuss this issue.
Okay.
Second?
All right. Shove hands, waive the rules before we can discuss this issue. Pass this.
I would just, I would just want to say, as everyone knows, I voted against this. I had about 10 or 11 items, but I don't need to repeat them because the speakers covered almost every one of them. I would reiterate some of the more important ones. And one was the sensitivity. I think we need to recognize that this tax comes on right after an increase in the 1% sales tax that the school board imposed. And it's coming right before whatever the legislature is going to do. But I've heard everything from 6 cents to 6% increase in fuel tax that the legislature is considering, including other bills to raise, to raise money for road maintenance. I have been consistent in saying, I don't think we know enough about this issue to impose a tax at this time. While I generally don't think that we should submit items to a referendum, at least for this year, it wouldn't cost us anything because we're going to have a citywide election. I recognize that a referendum is not binding. This tax will not be imposed until at least four members of this council approve it. But my recommendation would be to defer the tax, give the city manager time to look at it and to answer some of the questions related to the business rebate. I'm not sure all of that is legal. Get more questions answered on the, on the parking garage. See if we can get a little more comfortable with the estimate of how much money we're going to raise. And I, I'm not going to repeat whatever anyone else has said. I think council has heard from the preponderance of people here tonight that they would be satisfied if we would be willing to defer this to more study to make a better case for it. Some would even be pleased if we would just simply defeat it. And if we need to do it again next year, as we get the new budget for next year, then we could consider it at that time. My feeling is we'd be able to save enough money from a budget that we might be able to do it without, do those things without the hospitality tax. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a couple of comments. Hardly can cover it all, but I'll make a few points. You know, there, in so many ways, I find myself agreeing with so many speakers. But, but there's so much more to the story often than what, what gets communicated. The important thing is that I believe we do, in fact, need to continue to look at our budget going forward. I agree with the comments Mr. Ebner said in past meetings, that we're not out of the financial woods yet as far as covering our expenses. In fact, our, the rate of growth in our expense side of the ledger is going to accelerate as more of these capital projects, sales tax projects come online. With the new senior youth center, north side recreational facility, the Silver Bluff Water Treatment Facility, and so forth, we're looking at those things alone at probably 3/4 of a million to $1 million a year in additional expenses. We've got a lot of work to do to cut our budget to cover those things. So, I do think there's, there's that left to be done. The problem is, is that we're going to be facing that every year. We're going to face that kind of challenge every year until such time as we can generate revenue from, from growth. There's two ways that a city can, can offset the ever-increasing march of higher expenses. And that is, you either get more revenue from more people or you get more revenue from the same people. Growth is the, is the smarter choice because as you broaden the base, as you broaden the tax base, you can generate more revenue at a smaller incremental amount from more people, more businesses, more individuals. And so, I'd rather tax more people less than fewer people more. It's just my way of looking at it. Ultimately, too, with proper investment, you know, of these funds, if, if we can do it successfully to encourage growth, this will stave off, hopefully will stave off, or at least reduce the severity of future property tax increases. You know, in 25 years, it's very well documented, it's actually 26 years, but if we pass this upcoming budget in the next month. But it's well documented that in 25 years, we haven't had a millage rate increase. But in fact, we've had a millage rate decrease at least five times in that period. If you, a lot of people point out, and I've been one of those people for a lot of years, that through that period of time, the property values have increased. You know, the value, the assessed values of houses has increased during that period of time. So, I went in and indexed those two things. I looked at our actual millage rates from 1989 to today, and I indexed it against inflation from 1989 to today. And the net effect, our effective, our effective tax rate indexed for inflation has gone up 18% in 26 years. The inflation rate has gone up 91.9% in that same period of time. In other words, the city of Aiken has increased taxes at 1/5th the rate of general inflation. That's, that's something to be applauded. I don't get to take credit for that. I wasn't on council. But Ms. Price and Mr. Kavanaugh were. And I, and the rest of you have been here for some of that time. I think y'all deserve a little bit of credit for that because we've been able to keep our effective tax rate at a rate only 18% above what it was in 1989 when adjusted for inflation. That's been a great thing, but it's also been, it's also incurred a cost to us. We've not had the money, especially since 2006, as the revenue chart that we showed at the first speaker came up, we've not had the money to do some of the reinvestment that will really help carry us forward into the future, that will really plant the seeds for tomorrow's growth. They'll plant the seeds for tomorrow's businesses, will plant the seed for tomorrow's young professionals that we also dearly covet. It's, this is all about investing in the future. It's all about being responsible today and planning for the future. And, you know, I can't disagree with the idea of, of looking at the budget and cutting costs. If, if we could miraculously find millions of dollars to cut, then, you know, it may be that, as Mr. Dwar suggests, maybe we can do these things out of that. But the budget cuts that we've looked at thus far haven't been able to accomplish that. I'll applaud Roger LeDoux. It's, it's very often overlooked that in this budget that we're looking at for this coming fiscal year, we cut in personnel costs alone over $400,000 through, through combining jobs, changing some qualifications for jobs and put, yes, five and a half positions. When you look at the positions and benefits, that's the number that I've been given by the, by the, by Roger. But, so we've cut significantly in that regard. We've cut a lot of other, in a lot of other ways. So, budget cuts have been done. We, when we had it laid in front of us last October that we had a $700,000 budget shortfall, we all knew that that was pretty dire. Through some of the fee increases that we've implemented and through some of the budget cuts that Roger put together, you know, we've been able to solve that problem. But that's a very temporary solution. And we're going to have to do it again. And we'll have to keep doing it unless we invest in our future and try to ultimately grow our tax base, build our way out of this, rather than always pulling our arms in and trying to keep shrinking our government, shrinking our, and I'm all in favor of smaller government. But in terms of shrinking our services to our people, rather than doing that, I think we should try to grow the base, broaden it, so I can tax, so I can grow this, grow this city, so I can grow this city, excuse me, please, so I can grow this city to be able to maintain and enhance the quality of life that we've come to know and love, and ultimately make it a better city for our children to return to. That's, that's the reason for this.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Have to, go ahead.
I've listened to the comments this evening. And I do want to thank you all for coming out to express your comments to us. And, and I hope you appreciate that we're here to listen. And some of the things that we hear, it's new to us. And others, we have a lot of silent, when I say silent folks, folks that will not come to these chambers and speak as you, so many of you have confidence to come and sit and speak. We can't let those folks go unheard as well, as well as those folks who've sent us emails with their opinion. So, I want to thank all those folks for expressing the concern. I don't know how many of you had a chance to go online and look at the cities that have hospitality taxes. There are a number of them in this state. They're up to 2%. And while I recognize Aiken is different than Charleston, Greenville, Anderson, Mount Pleasant, the city of York, Beaufort, Columbia, Charleston, Goose Creek, while I realize we're different, people come through those towns like they come to Aiken, North Augusta, Augusta. The question is, are we so different that we do not want to maximize our potential tax base with them coming through our town? We're satisfied to go to their communities and eat, stay overnight, let them tax us whatever they will. But they come here and you, we say to them, we're cheaper, but our services are good. I do not like any taxes. I said that before, and I will say it again. When I look at the revenue that is generated by some of these towns, for example, Columbia, South Carolina, has generated millions of dollars based on hospitality taxes. And I had that in my notes somewhere, since 2002, about $77 million, I believe. Right now, there are issues right in Columbia with how those taxes are being spent given the, the amount of revenue that's coming in. Should this tax pass this evening, there will be the same issues. So, we'll have to figure out how we're going to allocate some of these monies to projects without causing an uproar of someone saying, I'm not getting my fair, fair share. I will tell you that some of the things that I've heard tonight concerned me as an individual because of the number of years that I have lived in this town. And that the people that I know in this community, who are good, good people, that look at those who are underserved and those who have abundance in nature. And we have a town that has been blessed with people that have been abundantly blessed. And when I heard about the Center for African-American History, Art, and Culture, I would ask the person that mentioned that to look at the history of that center and what the city actually put into it and how they're still working to try to get that center built. And there were several examples of that nature that I looked at, I listened to, that when we speak out on things, let us do the investigations before we start pinpointing as to how the city wastefully spent their money. We've got some, we've had some very successful projects in this town. And I know that sometimes we have a population that like to speak of the negative rather than the positive. But Aiken is a great town with a lot of great things going on. And I will always carry that message, no matter who's sitting in these chairs, that Aiken is a great community. We're not going downhill, but we are moving forward. And I think we will move forward with that, with the hospitality tax. And I will vote, and I will support this tax. You may not vote for me again. You may vote me out of office. But I will tell you one thing, I am voting my conscience. I am voting for the future of this town, and that is why I'm going to support this tonight.
Here, here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Guess it's my turn then. I appreciate also everyone's being, being here, number one, and for all the comments that have been made. And I understand very clearly how hard this issue may be. It's always, you know, we've run into a lot of these issues over the years that have been extremely hard. Lassie and I can remember Citizens Park as an example. And that was at a time when the site was reducing folks from the Savannah Riverside. And that was a hard decision to make, whether or not to go ahead and buy that land and build what we have now. You see what we have now. That has been a wonderful thing. And there was a lot of back and forth on that, you know? People didn't want us to do that. But it was done by a 4 to 3 vote. And I, for one, and I think you would agree, it's a wonderful place. It's one of the best in the southeast for our kids. And I'm glad it was done. Way back when, in the 70s, when, you know, the, the area there with the, a wonderful park area was voted on, or came up for a vote with Rite Patch in that area. That was, that was another one of those toughies. And it was passed by a 4 to 3 vote. People thought, well, you know, why are we wasting the money there? We don't have the money to, to keep it up. We don't have the money to do the things we need to do. But it was, four, four of the folks on the council at that time obviously felt like it was a worthy project and it should be done. And look at it now. We could have had a number of houses, little houses in that area. We could have had a number of houses, little houses in that area, but we don't. We have a beautiful place. I think I may be a little bit wrong on this, but I think when the reserve came up, we all supported, uh, you know, Woodside, but when the reserve came up, I think that was, that was a questionable vote.
What?
Uh, and I know, I, I suffered a lot on what I would do on that, uh, up until the last minute of the vote, and I supported it, and, and it, it passed, maybe not because of my vote, but it passed. And we have a wonderful, wonderful Woodside and reserve area out there now. I'm putting, I'm putting this issue we have tonight in that same kind of char, uh, category. I'm gonna vote for it. And I'm gonna tell you some of the reasons that I think we need it. Obviously, it's been discussed. We've got, we've got a whole, a whole bunch of things that we, we have down that we want to do or we may do, and all of them are good, and it depends on the money that comes in and what council wants to do with it. But I'm gonna go back, and people get sick of hearing this sometimes, I'm gonna go back and, and say for the fact that we haven't had a property tax millage rate in 26 years, not 25 now, I heard it was 26. And I, for one, are really happy about that. We tried not to tax our citizens during those period of times when we could have, but we, we didn't do it, and I was one that did not want to do that. And we, we didn't do it. But I will tell you that because of where we are now, with thousands of Savannah River employees no longer at the site, and many of those, probably 40 to 50%, uh, lived in Aiken, we're not getting that kind of revenue that we used to get. The economy's still not back to where it should be. So we, we, it's time, as far as I'm concerned, to have this one sales tax. And I've heard all, all of the things that have been said about what it's gonna do, what it's not gonna do. And I would say this too, it's always easy to, to criticize whoever wants, who, who has heard anybody come up and say, "We need a tax." You know, "I want a tax." You don't, you don't hear that. Councils have to make decisions that are, that are hard many times, and this is one of them. They don't come up too often, but, but for the many reasons, some of which I've, I've stated, I could, I could talk about, we're, we're using our reserves. There was a time when we had six, seven million dollars in reserve. We're down to three now, I think. We've used, had to root, had to use our reserves in order to, to make our budget level come out. And this may not be mean, mean a whole lot to you, but it, it means a lot to us, and we would have to do it again probably next year if, if we don't do something. So, anyway, th- this tax will give us, give us money to do some of the things we need to do, and I'm talking about, I'm talking about infrastructure. Somebody talked about infrastructures, and every, everybody talks about infrastructures, and, but this is a serious problem. We've got some water problems in the city. We've got probably some 50-year pipes, you know, underground, right past where we, where we are now, underground. Uh, you know, that's, we've got a lot of things we've gotta look at and make sure that we do move our city forward. We want to do some things that make, make it nicer. The alley, for instance. But, uh, so, anyway, I, I could go on and on, and it may not make any difference to anyone, but I'm gonna support this because I think it's the right thing to do at the right time, and I think we, I think we need it for the right purposes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a couple of comments before, obviously, this thing passes, um, every time we make a tough decision, we hear about Hoplins and Rye Patch and Citizens Park, and I'd love to know how much money we spent on Hoplins and Rye Patch in all those years.
I don't know.
We are now in the process, believe it or not, I think, of rebuilding the stables, and yet there's no horses ever gonna go in the stables. I mean, um, so I, I'm, I'm not sure that, they might have made a, uh, they might have been a wise decision, but the thing that I think we heard from our folks is, we need to make decisions and consider financial impacts of those decisions, not just that it's a beautiful facility, and Rye Patch is. A lot of people have been married. Tonight, there are people out there listening to, to music and so forth. We talked about the, the hospitality taxes, only 9% of the 270 municipalities in the state that collect more than a million dollars. I don't know why we think we're going to, and most of those are along the coast, so I don't know why we think we're going to collect a, a million dollars. I, I hope as we go through that we maintain a firm control, that we don't spend it till we have it. So we don't borrow from a reserve, we wait till we get it, and then we, we look and see how much we have to spend. I'm, I'm just amazed that 20 people have the courage to come to speak in front of that microphone. I remember the first time I did that in a community that I lived in, as comfortable as I am in front of a microphone, I was really nervous, speaking to, to a council. So I admire those of you, some of you, it was easier than others, but I, I admire those of you with the courage to come up and, and tell us that you think we're heading down the wrong track. I agree with, with all but one, obviously. I won't beat a, I won't beat a dead horse. I think the council is set on, on approving this thing. I would say that I'm, I'm disappointed. It's not the first time the council has had a room full of people opposing what you've, what you've wanted to do and have done it, so, um, we'll just have to live with it.
Let's remember one thing, we've got thousands of people out there that, that are not here. That doesn't mean they disagree with it or they agree with it. I happen to know a lot of folks that, that I've talked to, saw me talk to, that, that say this is the right thing to do at this time. So, appreciate everybody here doesn't want it. I understand that. An awful lot of people that, that do.
I'll give you a quick, uh, piece of, piece of data, Mr. Mayor. In 2014, 152 restaurants did $108,835,900 in gross revenues, uh, so that would have raised 1.08 million for the city in 2014, not counting prepared foods and beverages from bars and grocery stores and convenience stores and so forth. Also, North Augusta raises over 600,000, and they have, uh, little, around 40% of the number of restaurants that we've got, and they raise over 600,000 using the same 1% tax. So, uh, 1.2 million is a round number. We don't know exactly if it's gonna be 1.25 or 1.15, but it's, we think it's a conservative estimate for that 1.2.
Should we ask a question, Councilman?
We'll pass that.
Why you oppose the funding of that? What is the fear of the funding of that?
Because I think it, I think we need it now, that's, that's my answer to you. But for reasons I've said and reasons that you've heard, heard others say. You know, you know what bothers me a lot? How many people came to some of our work sessions when we were having work sessions? We've had a multitude of work sessions since Roger LaDuke came above and, and helped us. We had, we had so much on the table that needed to be worked. We've talked about this, you, you might say that, why are we rushing to judgment? I don't feel like we're rushing to judgment. This has been on the table, we've talked about it. Every one of the work sessions that we've had have been published in the paper, open to the public, open to the public. We have made any decisions in any meetings that wasn't open to the public. And, but nobody, how many of y'all came to any of the meetings that we had?
Let's keep this.
We, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to move on now. We've been here a long time, we've run way over our minutes, we're letting people talk and what have you. We, we need to find out, do we have, do we have a quorum or what?
We've got a quorum.
Yeah. Uh, I, I'd like to put, put this to a vote, please.
Okay.
The motion is made, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the 1% hospitality tax.
Second. Okay. I'll second it. Do we have a show of hands in favor? Okay. Pass this forward to, two, okay. Pass this forward to two. Really need to move on, on our agenda.
Item three is the second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to rezone property at West Side of Town Creek Road at Seven Oaks Drive from RS6 to Office Institutional.
Mr. Mayor, an ordinance amending the zoning of real estate owned by Michael D. Calhoun from residential, single-family RS6 to Office Institutional O.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor? Second.
All right. Any discussion necessary? If not, show hands, please. Pass this unanimously.
Page four is the second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to annex 27.27 acres on Old Aiken Airport Road and zone it PR Planned Residential.
Mr. Mayor, an ordinance to annex to the corporate limits of the City of Aiken certain property consisting of 27.27 acres of land, more or less owned by Gahl and Caldwell LLC, and to zone the same planned residential.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second?
I so move.
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion?
Well, one question. When this, between sessions, we'd ask Mr. Paradise and Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Gahl to discuss one open item. I assume that was taken care of, and I, and I'll see in here, so if that was done, I'm well pleased with it.
Okay, okay. The ordinance was amended since first reading.
I thought it was.
Paragraph two, I believe, and paragraph three were both amended following their meeting.
Okay. Very good. That's been done. That was when the request was made, so thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Let's do, all right. Pass, uh, show of hands, please. Pass this unanimously.
Count them before we raise them.
Item five is the second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to annex four lots on Mississippi Avenue owned by Habitat for Humanity and zone the area RS10 Residential Single Family. Do we have a motion in the second?
I so move.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. If not, show hands, please. Pass this unanimously.
Item six, second reading, public hearing of an ordinance to amend the FY 2014-15 budget for emergency work to relocate a water main on SC19. Do we have a motion in second for approval?
So move?
I second.
Okay. Discussion? Show of hands, please.
Which one is this on?
On the water main.
Okay, and a new business. First reading of an ordinance to set the millage rate for FY 2015-16 budget. Do we have a motion in second for that? Well, first of all, we need.
Mr. Mayor, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for the ordinary city purposes and for capital development purposes in the City of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, set the millage at 62 mills and to provide for the expenditures thereof.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Mayor? I second.
Okay. Discussion? If not, show of hands, please. Pass this unanimously. Item two, first reading of an ordinance to adopt a budget for fiscal year 2015 to 16.
Mr. Mayor, an ordinance adopting a budget proposed by the city manager containing estimates of proposed revenues and expenditures by the City of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016, and declaring that it shall constitute the budget of the City of Aiken.
Okay. Make sure, do we have a motion in second for that?
So move, Mr. Mayor?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Discussion?
Uh, just one comment. If the city manager needed some extra audit, audits done on the budget or anything that you need to finish it up, please let us know, and we'll go from there.
Very good.
And another question, are, are you comfortable on what needs, on what changes need to come back to us for approval, based on our rules?
I, I'm learning more every day, but I think I have a, a basic understanding that, and my rule of thumb will be, when in doubt, come back.
Super.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion in second. Show of hands for approval. Pass this unanimously. Item three, first reading of an ordinance to sell property along Silver Bluff Road to South Carolina Department of Transportation.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, an ordinance authorizing the City of Aiken to convey real property to the South Carolina Department of Transportation.
Do we have a motion in second for approval of that?
So move, Mr. Mayor?
I second.
Okay. Show of hands, please. Okay. Pass this unanimously. Okay. We're under petition's approval to install born leaning kits at three city parks.
Mr. Mayor, the Recreation Commission recently reviewed a request from the United Way of Aiken County to install learning kits in several city parks. These kits are provided at no cost to the city and are designed to provide an interactive learning experience for youngsters in an outdoor setting. If approved, these kits would be installed by volunteers with guidance from city parks, recreation, and tourism staff. Three parks were recommended for installation, Smith Hazel, Virginia Acres, and Library Parks. The Recreation Commission unanimously approves this request for their installation at their last meeting. The council consideration is approval to install learning kits at Smith Hazel, Virginia Acres, and Library Parks.
Okay. Ma'am, do, would you, you'd like to speak on this issue?
I'd like to make a general comment.
Okay. Okay, if you, please go there.
Ann Dix, 314 Jehovah Drive, Aiken, South Carolina. I would just like to speak on the general comment. I hope that these will be placed in other areas. I know a lot of people talk about the train station down there being a failure. I'm not from Aiken. I learn a lot. I took my grandkids down there when they came, and sometimes it's not always the pluses and minuses, but what benefits the growth of our children. So my thing is that whoever approved this, you know, it would be nice sometimes walking down the City of Aiken if you could come by and push something that would tell you something about that building that was there, you know, whatever it is. I just think that that educates our kids, and this is an excellent idea because at that young age, they just soak up information like a sponge, so I do, I know you're gonna approve it, so.
Thank you, Ann.
We would be foolish to deny this request, certainly.
Do we have a sense of which parks are used by the most children? The ones you've already mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. Makes sense, good. Yeah. That's where they need some.
Good, okay. Do we have a motion in second for approval?
I so move.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? I don't think so. Show of hands? Pass this unanimously. Okay. We're down to information now. Issues and updates, if you have anything.
It was interesting to see, Masters traffic was down. That came as a surprise. Did you see that in the packet? The Masters traffic was down? Wow.
Page 293.
Yeah. Looks like it was down in Daniel Field, Aiken, and McDuffie.
Well, Aiken spiked last year because of the rerouting from Augusta.
Yeah, but big, big increase for Augusta, yeah.
Move for adjournment, Stan.
I think, I think we can all see what I think, I think we can all see what, you know, what's coming up, the events and those kind of things. Is there anything else we need to discuss at this point?
Congrats to the city manager, completion of his first full meeting.
He survived.
We are generous.